Oh, yeah. No. Yeah. It hasn't sunk in yet. That's why everybody was crying at SFS. It's not over you.
Thank you, sir.
Did somebody do that for you while I was gone?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the September 4th, 2019, meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission. We'll start with roll call. Commissioner Montgomery.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Willoughby.
Here.
Commissioner Beenhoff.
Here.
Commissioner Busby is here.
Commissioner Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Brayley.
Here.
Commissioner Les Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bingham is absent. Commissioner Nannick.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Face of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda items 1 through 3 are listed under the consent agenda. Unless there is a request to remove the items from the consent agenda, the items will be approved in one motion. Is there a request to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Beenhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have moved to approve the consent agenda items as presented by staff.
Is there a second? Commissioner Nannick.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda per staff recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. New business. PUD 011906, at the request of the applicant, staff recommends consideration of PUD 011906, rezoning from PUD MR to PUD MR and preliminary development plan related to Woodsonia West multifamily development located in the 5100 to 5300 blocks of Woodsonia Drive be tabled until the October 7th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Does the commission have any questions on this? I have a question. Last time we heard that the lawyer was out of town on it, there's a reason for this?
The applicant's attorney contacted staff last week and requested to table it for 30 days as they were still considering some changes to their plan.
And I have feeling some of those changes had to do with them meeting with the residents out there?
I don't know any more information than that. I would assume so, but...
Thank you. There's no other questions? Would somebody care to make a motion for tabling this issue? Commissioner Montgomery.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table PUD-01-1906, the rezoning and preliminary development plan related to Woodsonia West multifamily development until the October 7th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.
Is there a second? Commissioner Peterson?
Second.
Motion is second to table PUD 011906 until the October 7th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next on the agenda, Z061909 and Pre-Plat 101909, as well as SP231909, rezoning from AG to PI, preliminary plat and preliminary site plan approval for the Project Homeland Phase 2 at the southeast corner of 43rd Street and Claire Road. Staff.
Thank you. All right, we have a short presentation on the staff report for Project Homeland 2 this evening. If you'll follow along on the slides, this takes you through the graphics in our staff report. And as always, if you have any questions about anything else that was not covered in the short presentation, please let me know and I'd be happy to discuss it. This project is located roughly at 43rd, just west of K-7. You can see on the map on the screen, way off to the upper left here with the yellow star. That's our project location. The summary of open items for this one, these are pretty straightforward. A lot of these are having to do with the approvals necessary for Step 2, which is the final site plan, final plat, and those final drawings for fire department. These open items include having to submit a final site plan in the future because this is just a preliminary approval, submitting a revised landscape plan at final site plan stage, building elevations, a final plat. One thing that does need to be taken care of relatively soon is renaming the plat Project Homeland 2. Right now, it's currently named Shawnee Homeland 2. And in order to make things consistent, we just want to see that quickly naming of Project in Shawnee on that plat. And then the fire department had some comments about fire lanes, fire flow, and fire hydrants that can be submitted at final site plan stage. Here's an aerial image of the site. It is in the southeast corner of Claire Road and 43rd Street. It's a pretty vacant piece of land, as you can see here. So it makes it easy for us to put a site plan on there in a minute and show you what they're looking to do. And just so you have context, if you may remember back in the beginning, we saw Project Homeland 1 come through, and that was on the north side of 43rd Street. And Project Homeland 2 is on the south side of 43rd Street. So here you can see the two projects together. Again, this is Project Homeland 2 we're discussing tonight, and you can see how it relates to Project Homeland 1. Both of these are just in the preliminary stage. Project Homeland 1 received rezoning approval as a final approval back in May and June in April from the city council. And they have a preliminary plat and preliminary site plan approval. And Project Homeland 2 tonight is just looking for the rezoning recommendation from the planning commission. They'll need to get city council approval on that rezoning. However, they are looking for the preliminary site plan and preliminary plat approval for this piece as well. So the two projects will be mostly at the same stage, hopefully in the next couple of months, according to the applicant. Here you can see the future land use map from our comprehensive plan, and the subject site for this project is outlined in red. You can see it's called out for Warehouse Industrial, as is most of this area here west of K-7. And then this is the current zoning, and you can see where Project Homeland 1 was rezoned to all PI to the north of this. And this property is zoned ag currently. We do have PI to the east, and then more ag property to the west and south in this particular area. But again, as you saw in that last graphic, we are calling for Warehouse Industrial for most of the property in this particular area. This is the proposed rezoning, and just so you can see here, going very clearly from ag to PI is what the applicant is proposing. This is the proposed preliminary site plan. This feature is about a 325,000 square foot industrial building, just a single building. And then they have employee parking in the front and all the truck deliveries going to the back. They actually have truck entrances on 43rd Street, right in the east corner of 43rd Street, and then on Claire Road, sort of toward the south of the site that you see there. So the truck traffic will actually not intermingle with the employee traffic in this particular layout that they're showing. We also had the site plan reviewed by fire, by engineering, and also by our transportation manager. And all of those disciplines have provided comments in the staff report. Because this is a preliminary site plan at this stage, a lot of those comments will be addressed later on. Some of the large comments are 43rd Street and Claire Road, how they're going to be improved, which we've gotten pretty far, I'd like to say, on the designs for 43rd Street, and we're working with the applicant to get that moving along. We've also been studying the traffic for this particular development and the Phase 1 development. And there are some necessary improvements to K-7, just to make sure that we have enough turning lane, especially for the westbound turning lane off of K-7 onto 43rd. And from what we've heard so far from KDOT, they are aware of those plans, and we've been told we've got somewhat of a green light for them looking to find some funding for that project. But still to be determined until we get the shovels in the ground, as always. Here's a conceptual elevation the applicant provided. These are the same types of conceptual elevations provided for the Phase 1 development. At this time, we really don't have anything beyond this picture, except to know that it's going to be a high-quality industrial-type building. And we will continue to work with the applicant as they get to their final site plan stage for submittal of their own elevations. Here's their preliminary plat. We've worked with them to make sure that this preliminary plat, other than the title, is much in compliance with what we're looking for for a preliminary plat. And we've made sure to get the necessary route away for the expansion of Claire Road in this particular area, as well as 43rd Street. And that brings me to our recommendations. We have three recommendations, one for rezoning, one for preliminary site plan, and one for preliminary plat. Those are all within your staff report, and staff is recommending approval based on certain conditions found in this recommendation section of the staff report. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is the applicant present? If you'd come forward and state your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Chip Corcoran. I'm a civil engineer with Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting. My address is 15424 West 90th, Lenexa, Kansas. We've worked very closely with staff throughout this process, and as Stephanie mentioned, very similar to the work that's been done on Homeland 1, we understand the conditions and will continue to work with staff to bring those to fruition. No other comments, but would stand for any questions that you have.
To be clear, you are in agreement with staff recommendations on this project?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for applicant or staff? Mr. Peterson?
I know this is a much smaller area than the larger development, but we're taking basically open land and creating advantages to runoff. Are we looking into any type of concrete or anything that allows rainwater or anything not just to run off, but to go through? We'll be covering an extensive amount of area in an already low elevation. Is that being considered at all?
Right. Stormwater management controls and water quality controls are considered as part of the project and absolutely incorporated into the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Montgomery?
The potential improvements needed on 43rd Street and the intersection with K-7, that's undetermined at this point.
We have a pretty good idea of what the expectation is. 43rd Street would be a lane in each direction with a center turn lane. There would be a double left turn lane from K-7 west onto 43rd Street, and a right turn acceleration lane, and some signal improvements and some minor improvements on the east side or the east leg of the intersection with K-7 and 43rd.
And the developer, the applicant, would be responsible whenever that's determined?
It's a shared project between the city and the developer. I didn't mention Claire Road. There's some improvements on Claire Road as well. You can see to the extent of the western boundary of the project.
Is Claire Road even paved?
It's not.
And I'll clarify your question about funding. At this point, we haven't determined exactly which pieces is public funding, which pieces are private funding. I'm sure we will have more of those details worked out as we progress into the final stages for site plan.
Commissioner Brayley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question's for staff. And again, back to 43rd Street. This is looking way off into the future, but will this be the intended route if and when we develop the Riverfront Park? Will 43rd Street be that road that ends up connecting to the Riverfront Park?
So there's a couple different ways to get to that future park. 43rd Street, with it probably being improved first, I would guess, it will certainly have the potential to be a route to the Riverfront Park. However, I don't think that would be our primary goal, for that to be our entrance through an industrial park ticket to the park. I foresee us having a further south connection, but at this point, I don't think we have any roadway plans set in stone since we don't have the park project moving quite yet.
Okay. Well, that being said, and I understand, I mean, we know where the location is, we sort of know what the network of roads are, and you said the right things as far as we certainly don't want an industrial road to be the entrance to the park. But it would seem that either planning or engineering or the city just in general needs to be looking at that in the future as developments occurring here. I don't want us to be not knowing as we're making decisions because I would sit there and say, the reason I was asking is if 43rd Street was going to be that main street, then are we looking at a wider cross-section with a protected bike lane for those people that aren't going to drive, but that are going to, you know, be riding to the park? So anyway, that's kind of my question. I want to encourage the staff to kind of be looking a little bit further in the future as this starts getting ramped up.
Yeah, and part of our cross-section that we're proposing so far for 43rd does include an off-street trail. So we will have a trail easement with a paved trail that I believe, do we move to the south side?
To the south.
South side of 43rd Street.
Okay.
So there is definitely a plan to have a trail connection there. However, I don't think that's our main goal, for that to be our main corridor to the future park.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? I have a question out of curiosity. This is a lot of industrial space. Are you at liberty to be able to tell us what you're proposing to go in there? Because that would certainly make a difference on some of the stuff we're looking at.
I think the plan is to look at it for general industrial uses. There's no specific tenants that we're ready to speak to at this time.
Fine. Thank you. Any other questions for applicant or staff? If not, thank you. At this point in time, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to comment on these matters? And actually, the zoning is a public hearing, so we'll start the zoning. Dealing with the zoning, is there anyone that wishes to speak on that? Seeing no one, then the public meeting or public hearing is closed. And does anyone from the audience care to comment on the site plan or anything like that? Seeing no one, then we're in commission discussion.
I would.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please. Sir, if you'd come forward and state your name and address, and if you'd write "legibly" on the ledger.
Legibly?
Legibly, yeah. We got instructions that it need to be "legibly."
Edward Leveridge, 5022 Hilltop Drive. I really didn't come here for this. It was for the Woodsonia deal, but I guess it's been tabled till next month. The reason I asked is 43rd is a mess right now. If you're traveling north or south on K-7, all the vans coming from Amazon, turning at that stoplight, it's just... I mean, you can go down K-7, and every two minutes or so, the light turns red and they turn left. I mean, it's a slew of vans from 7 o'clock till 9:30 in the morning, and it's just a traffic nightmare for everyone traveling north and south. And I'm just wondering if this is going to add to that traffic?
And you're talking, referring to being on K-7?
Yeah.
Where the traffic is?
Yeah.
And I would say that that probably falls to KDOT, Kansas Department of Transportation, to help solve. But I would imagine that since they've been made aware of what the applicant is trying to do from the city, I presume, then they're aware of what we're seeing in the future.
Okay.
Now, how fast KDOT works is certainly not anything I could guess on.
I can.
Anyone else would care to? They're welcome to.
No, it's just a comment I had, so I'll be back next month.
Thank you. Anyone else in the...
If I may, I just wanted to piggyback on your response to that comment as well. We do have a traffic study that was provided from the applicant that staff reviewed, and it shows very clearly that there are needs on K-7 and 43rd that are not going to be met without improvements. So it's very critical for this project to not only have 43rd Street redone, but also have some lane expansion and some improvements made to K-7 related to the 43rd Street intersection as well. So hopefully, that'll alleviate some of the Amazon traffic as well. But you're likely going to probably have to stop a little bit longer even if you're going north-south on K-7, because we're going to have a lot of extra turning movements on 43rd, both directions.
Thank you, Ms. Momburg. We're in commission discussion, then? Commissioner Beenhoff?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at the plan and how it conforms with the overall plan for the land use, it seems to me that it's an appropriate use for the land, and I don't see any reason why we would not move forward with that.
Any other comments from the commission? If not, then I suggest we deal this with three separate motions, one for the zoning, one for the pre-plat, and one for the preliminary site plan approval. Commissioner Wise?
I'll make a motion to approve zoning Z06-19-09, which is rezoning from ag to PI. Per staff recommendations.
Is there a second? Commissioner Brayley?
Second.
Motion is second to approve rezoning of Z061909 from agriculture planned industrial. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. That leaves us with pre-plat. Commissioner Les Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I move the pre-plat 10-19-09 for Project Homeland 2 at 43rd Street and Claire Road, subject to staff recommendations, conditions, excuse me.
Is there a second? Commissioner Nannick?
Second.
Motion is second for approval of pre-plat 101909, Project for Homeland Phase 2 at the southeast corner of 43rd and Claire Road. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Commissioner Brayley?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for approval of SP23-19-09, preliminary site plan approval for Homeland Phase 2.
Is there a second? Commissioner Montgomery?
Second.
Motion and a second for approval of SP231909, preliminary site plan approval for Homeland Phase 2 at 43rd and Claire Road. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. That puts us into other business. Does the staff have any business for the commissioners?
Now, one quick announcement. Sorry about that. On Tuesday, September 17th, we have the Reimagine 75th Street Open House at Sherrano Elementary that evening. I believe it's 5 to 7 that evening at the elementary school. And we will be displaying some concepts based on our community survey back in May and our first opening house back in May. And hopefully, this will be the home stretch for the Reimagine 75th Street project, and we'll be able to get some of those plans approved here next month or so, and out to bed this fall, so we can actually see some construction this spring.
Ms. Momburg? Oh, heck. It's just easier to say Stephanie. Sorry. Stephanie, could you email that to us?
Sure.
To each of the commissioners?
Absolutely, I will.
Very good. Anything else from staff for the commission? Mr. Doug Olman?
Just kind of to follow up on this, last August 22nd, I was able to speak on behalf of the city at a KDOT local jurisdiction 10-year visioning plan, and I spoke about this K-7 corridor, the need for infrastructure improvements at 75th, the flyover of 71st, and really focused on 43rd Street. And that's a 10- to 20-year plan, and so obviously, it was more of a broad-scope type presentation. But after that, I was sought out by the Deputy Transportation Secretary. She was very interested in 43rd Street and in particular, this project, because of the potential generation of 1,800 jobs. And she wanted to let me know that in 2020, there is funding available for very short-term projects, very large dollars with very minimal local match. And I believe that the applicant and the city is working with the state to address those issues that were brought up in terms of intersection improvements. The great thing about this is it won't only benefit the City of Shawnee, it also benefits the City of Bonner Springs as well, as they've developed on the east side. So I want to point that out, that that is in the works. Nothing's ever guaranteed in terms of funding, but it sounds very promising.
Thank you, Doug. Anything else from the staff? Does the commission have anything for staff? I want you to know I had a full dinner tonight. I've got plenty of water. I've got plenty of water. And I ain't budging.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Les Smith?
Based on the fact I have not had dinner, and my pot is half-empty, I move to adjourn. Just to clarify. A bottle of water.
Is there a second? Commissioner Wise?
I'll second that.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Sure. I just feel that you wouldn't be in there.